Okay, good evening. Seeing that the time is upon us and we have a quorum. Ms. Nash, can you give us a roll call? I'd like to call the meeting to order and have a roll call, please.
Mr. Gino?
Here.
Mr. Gomes?
Present.
Mr. Boland? Mr. Carlin? Dr. Flowers?
Present.
Mrs. Gaines?
Here.
Mrs. Sylvia?
Here.
Thank you, and for the record, Mrs. Boland is absent because she's celebrating the birth of a grandchild, the first one.
Isn't this the first one today?
Yes, so she's a little boy.
Thanks.
Yeah.
Oh, and Mr. Galvin.
And Mr. Galvin, actually, is a very new member to his family, he's a new granddad. Fine, the fifth one.
Number five.
So his time tonight will be very short with us. We're gonna push his items right to the front.
Happy news.
Please stand for the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
No, that clock is broken. The clock in the back of the room is broken, so it's only right twice a day. Ah, the next, let me see here, I'm sorry. We have a moment of silence, please. Please keep the following individuals who have passed away in your thoughts and prayers. Marilyn Palmer, retired Council 94 member. A moment of silence. Thank you. Ms. Nash, do we have anyone signed up for public comment? We do not. Next would be resolutions and certificates of achievement. The Campaign for Grade Level Reading is a collaborative effort of fundraisers, funders, nonprofit partners, business leaders, government agencies, states, and communities across the nation to ensure that many more children from low-income families succeed and graduate prepared for college, a career, and active citizenship. Since its launch in 2010, the GLR campaign has grown to include more than 300 communities representing 42 states, the District of Columbia, Puerto Rico, and the U.S. Virgin Islands, with 3,800 local organizations, 250 state and local funders, including 168 United Ways. Newport was one of 27 communities across the nation selected as a 2017 All-American City Award finalist for making measurable progress for low-income children on the key drivers of early reading success: school readiness, school attendance, summer learning, and grade level reading. As part of the continuing efforts this year, Newport will continue our efforts in sharing with our families and community the importance of attendance in school and grade level reading. The two go in hand. Newport is very proud of our school district and its efforts, especially in the very first year being nominated for not one but two awards by the Read to Grade Three Coalition. Newport looks forward to our work and results for this year. The plaque and banner will be presented to the committee. Superintendent Jermaine?
Right, here you go.
Great job, thank you very much.
There you go. There's the plaque, and the banner is now at Pell Elementary School.
Excellent. Oh, if you can see that part. Where will we have this displayed?
We can, we can place it in this room, or we can place it at Pell Elementary?
I think it'd be appropriate at Pell, that's the age group that's being... Thank you. The next order of business, what we would like to do, if we could just, this is to help Mr. Galvin. We did circle some items in the pre-meeting, and if I have the support of the committee here, we want to request to move several items to the front of the list, so to speak. And it would be 4.4, 4.5, 4.6, and 5.3, and then the rest of the agenda we'll deal with. Do I have support on that?
Second.
Second.
This has been seconded, is there any discussion on that? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? So noted. The next item we're gonna deal with would be an action item, 4.4, request for approval of use of labor relations connection to administer grievance between Tan and Newport School Committee. Do I have a motion?
Mr. Chair, I would prefer that we remain with AAA where we've been. I see no reason to change.
Is there a second on that?
Second.
Is that, Mr. Chairman, I understand what Mrs. Gaines is saying, is that an official motion to deny the request?
Ah, I believe it would be just to...
I will happily second that, thank you.
I did second that.
Any discussion on that item? All those in favor of remaining with AAA for the purposes of the grievance?
Aye.
Any opposed? So noted. 4.5, we received a letter from our legal counsel, and let me just dig it up so we can Sorry, we're jumping through. Ah, committee will consider appointment of legal counsel for collective bargaining. Mary Ann Carroll is leaving her law firm and starting her own firm with two other lawyers. The committee voted in March to award the contract to her firm that she previously worked for to do contract negotiations for the school committee. This evening, we will be asked to consider to leave that law firm for contract negotiations and consider awarding this to Mary Ann Carroll and her new firm, staying with the law firm she is no longer associated with or another firm. Please see the attachments which are followed. So basically, what we have here is we have a couple of letters, one from Mary Ann Carroll officially notifying us that her and two of the partners from the previous firm that we are in contract with to do collective bargaining agreements with. And the firm that she was with was basically stating that it would be at our pleasure one way or the other, they didn't see an issue with that, so we need to formally take a vote on going with Mary Ann's firm. Is there a motion for that?
I move that we transfer our legal, our bargaining negotiations with Mary Ann Carroll and Associates. I think it's, that's not the name of the firm, though.
Peneus Carroll and Barti.
Correct.
That we move with her to the new firm.
Second.
It's been moved in second, is there a discussion on this item? All is in favor?
I have a question.
Okay.
Jack Seigre, retiree, does this include Mary Ann Carroll's dealings with retirees to date as well?
Yes.
Anything she's currently with, these three partners are the only ones that were really working on any of Newport's issues, so they will retain all that. We will no longer be using Recuprio or, you know...
Who are the other two partners?
Aubrey Lombardo and Andrew Peneus.
And it's not in your motion, though, to bring retirees up over. It's only for collective bargaining with active members? I didn't, I don't remember.
We're essentially leaving the firm she was with, and anything they were handling, these three are gonna handle. There's no pulling out pieces, it's whatever they're currently working on, they're gonna retain those issues and continue to work on those issues. We're changing our law firm essentially for the items that were being worked on.
Is the, are the remaining partners in the law firm for whom she worked, are they bidding for collective bargaining as well?
No.
No.
So they don't want anything to do with Newport?
Currently, they said it's to our pleasure. They didn't say they wanted nothing to do with it, they said, in fact, Jack, it was up to us. If we wanted them, they would certainly keep our business, they weren't running from us, they just said, we understand, you're working with these three lawyers, and it would be, and it wouldn't ruffle their feathers if we, they were basically being professional about it and letting us know.
Well, there's currently a case in Superior Court, who are going to be the lawyers of record then? Mary Ann Carroll was representing Newport School Department with her firm.
She will remain. Whatever, Mr. Galvin, I don't know if there's any legalese about this other than the fact that we're basically officially naming that firm.
Yeah, I mean, if it depended case, she would just notify the court if you address events of that sort.
Right. Just be clerical changes.
Nothing changes.
Sure, yes, we will. I will, thank you.
Your vote.
I'm sorry, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Are there any opposed? We'll make the proper notifications, Superintendent Jermaine. The next item on the agenda would be the 4.6. Mr. Carlin has requested consideration of a resolution. Mr. Carlin, do you...
Mr. Chairman, at this, at this point, considering that I told neighbors of the Pell School property who this most affects that we would likely not deal with this until later on in our agenda, and I understand completely why we have brought it up at this point, I would like to, at least for the time being, or I would like to, not for the time being, I would like to move that, or I would like to ask my colleagues that we address 5.3, which is a discussion item regarding the cell phone tower, since there are many neighbors here who would like to hear the update and perhaps comment prior to the 4.6 action item, which I will also, at the appropriate time, be offering an amendment regarding.
Does anyone have an issue with hearing 5.3 first?
Well, we wanted to get Mr. Galvin out...
He wants 5 point, that was a request by Mr. Galvin to also be here for 5.3. So it is one of the four topics, Mr. Galvin, which to be here for. I don't have an issue with it. Basically, it's on to the discussion item to have, I believe, let me get the verbiage here. Legal counsel will provide us with the status update. Mr. Galvin?
Yes, Mr. Chairman, just to update you relative to the cell tower status, keeping the committee abreast, in January of this past year, we reminded the vendors who occupied the cell tower that they, their leases wouldn't be renewed at the end of their current term, that they had been notified of that prior to that. We reminded them that they would be needing to take steps to restore the lease premises to its condition prior to the lease and remove all of their ground infrastructure and equipment in conjunction with that termination. And the provisions of the lease provide for a period of 120 days from the end of the lease to accomplish that. They were all put on notice to that effect, we asked them to keep us abreast of their plans. I think they had other efforts throughout the spring in terms of addressing the issues that they faced, trying to continue coverage in this area of town. I have also, I've not heard any specific plans from them relating to removal of their items, and only one vendor is in the category of beyond a lease term at this point, that's Verizon, whose term ended on June 18, but they're within their 120 days in terms of achieving those steps of removal. I've not heard anything specific from them in that regard. I reached out at the end of last week to try and elicit some updated information from them, I've not heard any reply just yet to that. T-Mobile ends in, at the end of December, December 29, and AT&amp;T ends on October 24, and they each have 120 days thereafter as well. I did make inquiry to the city to see if anything was happening on their end. I think they're exploring efforts to try and figure out some way to maintain coverage in this area of town, but the world-specific steps might be, I'm not privy to that, don't know what that is, but we've reached out to the vendors, eventually we will hear if there's no action. Ultimately, it falls on you as a committee as to how assertive you desire to be, or whether there's any degree of allowing additional time to achieve these termination steps. So, that's kind of the current status of things, there's not much specific to report other than the fact that they've been put on notice and have been made aware of the status of things, and I'll keep you apprised as I hear more information on it.
Thank you.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes.
Thank you, thank you, Mr. Galvin. So, there is no reason to believe, at this point, you have not heard, as you just mentioned in part, that the cell phone companies are resisting the Newport School Committee's directive to dismantle their equipment from the cell tower?
I've not heard a reply, one way or the other, relative to that time.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Galvin, and question two, as I noted, you also mentioned the city, that you reached out to the city. Are you still of the belief that the Newport School Committee controls, for lack of a better phrase, the operations of, the physical plant of, et cetera, the grounds, oh, physical plant and grounds, I suppose are the same, controls our schools until such time as we turn said schools over to the City of Newport, assuming that we are no longer using them as schools?
Yeah, it's always been my opinion relative to this particular topic, that it was difficult to segregate this particular piece from the entire grounds of Rogers High School, and that it was a critical part of Rogers High School. The school committee's not in the business of leasing real estate, per se, but faced with the inability to segregate it completely, it was always my opinion that it would be within the authority of the school committee to deal with that particular portion of Rogers High School. So, that remains my opinion, that it falls under your umbrella relative to dealing with school grounds.
Thank you, Mr. Galvin, thank you, Mr. Chairman. My closing, well, my additional comment, I'm not sure if it's closing, but we voted on this, this, as Mr. Galvin just explained, is a matter that the committee has directed, and I look forward to not only an update as soon as possible from Verizon Wireless, whose contract has already expired, but also from T-Mobile and AT&amp;T, and subsequently, the dismantling of the equipment from our property. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Galvin. We will go back now and take up action item 4.6. Mr. Carlin, do you have a resolution for this?
I have an action item, Mr. Chairman, at the appropriate time, I would like to offer an amendment.
To...
The action item that I presented for school committee's consideration is not an action item that I would like to see voted on this evening, I'd like to amend it via an oral amendment, please.
Okay.
Is this the appropriate time, Mr. Chairman?
I believe we need to have something to change, we don't have anything officially to change.
Okay.
I mean, I don't know, but there's nothing really, it was a document Mr. Carlin gave to us as a resolution.
If there will be a motion, either of the original one or his amendment, and there's nothing before you currently, so if he wants to submit something differently, he can do that as his original motion, and if it has a second, then you carry on. If he wants to submit the original proposed resolution and make a motion for that, that would need to be seconded, and then entertain a motion to amend if that is what your intention is. Or you can, if the topic is on the table, you can submit a separate motion if you so desire.
Mr. Chairman, just a quick question for legal counsel. When you say there's nothing before us currently, you mean that a motion has not been made and seconded?
Correct.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Galvin. Mr. Chairman, the motion is, or the action item is before the committee, what, I am not going to read this action item, I'd be happy to present it to the public if necessary, but my original action item requested, in part because of what Mr. Galvin just informed us about the school committee's right to control its physical plant, et cetera, grounds, et cetera, my original action item was to take down the rims again at the Pell School playground, as this school committee had unanimously, or by consensus, I should say, since it wasn't a vote, agreed to, back at our regular June meeting. However, not every one of the Pell School neighbors, who again, because of my fault regarding the timing of this issue this evening, are not here yet, but not everyone who is a Pell School neighbor believes that we should take the rims down. So my suggestion and my amendment orally was to strike the second to the last paragraph regarding resolve that the Newport School Committee hereby directs appropriate school department staff to remove all basketball rims located outdoors on Pell School property, et cetera. I would like to strike that from my resolution or my action item, and the remainder of my action item, Mr. Chairman, I would like to leave in place. As such, I move...
You've heard...
Or as such, I move the action item, sorry.
You've heard Mr. Carlin's amendment, and you've heard him make a motion to approve it as amended orally. Is there a second?
I'm sorry, Mr. Chairman, I beg your pardon, and I apologize for this. I know that the members of the committee, and probably the neighbors and others, are aware of why I've done this, but the neighbors continue to express frustration regarding the type of violations, as you can see, in the resolution to their quality of life, and most of these violations do not come from youngsters who are playing basketball, they come from older adults who are completely ignorant to the property rights and personal rights of the neighbors. The neighbors feel as though having a set closing time of the playground would at least help to alleviate a little bit their concerns, and that's why, again, with my apology, Mr. Chairman, I should have mentioned that earlier, but that's why I offered the resolution or the action item.
Is there a second on Mr. Carlin's resolution?
Okay.
There is no second on that, Mr. Carlin. So that, that's the end of that issue. Mr. Galvin, is there a, I mean, this would be the time, I suppose, we covered the items that you, you thought you needed to be here for?
I didn't think you needed to bring anything else.
Well, we don't know. Anyway, good luck and enjoy.
Congratulations again, congratulations.
The next item we'll bring up on an action item is 4.1, and let me go back and get my agendas. Yeah, I got some backup data here. Item 4.1, request for approval to award RFP Newport Public Schools 18-002 enlarged door opening and install new frame in the doors. Qualified bid was received to enlarge the door opening, installation of new frame and doors at Rogers High School. Superintendent supports the recommendation provided by the superintendent of the facilities of management. Is there a motion to...
Mr. Chairman, I make a motion to approve 4.1.
Second?
Second.
That being E. and J. Mason.
It's been, the motion's been made and seconded, is there discussion on this item? Mr. Carlin?
Is Mr. Harrop in the audience?
He is, yes.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, thank you, Tom. Are we taking only 4.1, Mr. Chairman, or are we taking all items in with respect to the city?
While, while he's at the podium, if, if the committee would like, we could adopt them or speak about them all, David, if that's, Mr. Carlin, that's fine with me.
Be happy to amend the motion to...
While, while Mr. Harrop's up at the...
I'll second Mr. Gomes's motion, amendment.
Motion to approve the three, 4.1, 4.2, and 4.3, which is furnish and install VCT and carpet, select rooms at Rogers High School, furnish and install new darkening shades at Rogers High School. Those were Public School 18-003 and Public School 18-007. Mr. Carlin?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, thank you, Mr. Vice Chair, for the amendment. Mr. Harrop, only one quick question, or I guess two. Where are the dollars coming from for these items? Are they coming from the Newport School Committee's fiscal '18 budget, or are they coming from the city? And part two is if they are coming from the city, if the city is paying for this, what's sort of the trigger there with regard to when the city will take over necessary expenditures versus when it is up to us to take it from our own fiscal budget, from our own budget?
Because the city manager has had conversations with the superintendent of schools, I would defer that question to the city manager and the superintendent of schools, because I think there was some common ground, but there was also a little bit of a divide on exactly what the definition was.
The funding for these projects is coming from the money that was allocated to the state when Newport decided to take over the building for the Career and Tech. So the, we do have remaining funds, and if I'm looking at the totals in front of me, I believe all, if not most, of the funding is coming from that award, from the state way back when.
Go ahead.
Mr. Chairman, may I? With all due respect to the superintendent, I asked the very same question at the meeting in which we installed the new principal of Rogers High School. I asked you where the money was coming from for ADA upgrades...
Oh, I thought you were talking about the projects that are on the agenda.
No, 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 I am talking about the projects that were on the agenda this evening.
Okay, okay, thank you.
But when I say with all due respect to the superintendent, I asked you at the last meeting, when we installed the principal, I can't remember the date, but you made a recommendation that we expend money to comply with the ADA for this NAC Tech building, and I asked you where the money would come from, and you explained that the money would come from leftover funds from the state, which the state granted to the department when the department took control over this, this facility. I then asked you how much money we have left in that account, and you told me we had nothing left in the account. Now, the superintendent tells me that we are getting, we are taking money from that account, so how can that be?
The money was accounted for. Okay, so I made a mistake in what I just said. I just realized this is not the ADA required bid, this is for the shades and the other materials in the Rogers High School campus.
Which would have triggered my question.
Right, so that, my apologies, my apologies, I made a mistake in what I just said.
Okay.
So, these are, if I'm not mistaken, these are all in our budget, and I know Mr. Roy is not here, he had to leave unexpectedly this afternoon, but my understanding was in the repair and maintenance budget in lines, go ahead.
So, without going back to the city side and how they break down, what they're going to pay for, what I can say is, for instance, enlarging the door opening, that is a grant that Mr. Dave Connell got specifically for improvements to that room, and his grant is paying for the enlargement of that door and all associated work. All of the window shades and the darkening film is gonna be split, some of it's between grants for improving some sensory rooms, and some of it's through the Rogers High School maintenance budget. It's pretty evenly split between the two, but those that can be funded through the grants that Ms. Grantham received will be funded through the grant for doing shades and window film in the sensory rooms. And in terms of the flooring, we have the same situation. We have the rooms down in the 800s that are in dire need of having new tile floors put in, that will be the Rogers High School maintenance budget. The floors that need padded carpet will be paid for out of the grant because they support the sensory room and those children.
So, thank you, Tom. How can, as a follow-up, and you said that 4.1, 4.2, and 4.3 are split about the same between grants and the school department's facilities budget, and I think these are all worthy and needed expenditures, but how can we be spending about half of the total when we don't have that half in our fiscal '18 budget? If it is in the fiscal '18 budget, can someone point out to me where, what line item, because the line item that I'm looking at appears to have far less than the total tens of thousands of dollars that are required for these three items?
Right, so all of Dave Connell's work, which is the first one that Mr. Harrop just described, and I apologize, I was not ready to speak to this, was from the Van Buren grant. The Van Buren Foundation grant is covering that. Then the next one is furnish and install the VCT and the carpet and the select rooms at Rogers High School. That is not yours, and I'm looking at Ms. Grantham. Right, 4.2, that's the one that's coming out of the maintenance budget.
And what's the, what's the total expense for 4.2?
I'm looking at that now.
$12,862.35, and it looks like, on that same page, 4.2, that we have in our backup data, that sensory room improvement bond was $5,928.60, and then Rogers High School Maintenance and Repair was $6,933.76, so it's split with $1,000 heavier on the, that's...
So it's split with $1,000 heavier on the, that's at least on the backup data that I have.
Absolutely, I mean, the underlying, the underlying data that was provided is pretty clear. I just question, when we haven't expended $12,000 plus, or when we haven't appropriated $12,000 plus in the fiscal '18 budget for maintenance, how can we be spending $12,000 plus, unless I'm wrong? I see that the line item indicates we have $5,000. Is that wrong?
Right, and I don't have that in front of me at the moment, the budget. I will look for it.
Mr. Chairman, I'll wait till Tappus gets here.
So, I don't have the numbers in front of you, but what I can say is, I went through the whole budget that was approved, and I pulled out the numbers that I believed to be correct, and I emailed them to Tappus. And I wish I would have brought them with me, and he said, yes, you are correct, those are the right numbers. And the Rogers High School maintenance budget right now has over $82,000 in it for this fiscal year, according to Tappus.
And that's why I'm getting a little confused on the questioning.
So, I guess I'm confused as well.
Right.
The line item doesn't seem to indicate that, but I'll wait until Tappus gets here and I'll ask him the question.
Mr. Collins, what line are you looking at in the budget?
61, I think.
61?
Although, you know, this may be an older one, this is, this is an older, this may not be the budget that was ultimately approved by the committee on July 27. This may simply be an older budget.
Right.
Or a draft, so I, we'll have to wait. I've just, if the simple answer is we've got the money, then we've got the money. I didn't think we had the money.
There's your answer, we've got the money. It wouldn't be in front of you if we did not have the money.
Thank you very much.
You're welcome.
Okay.
And I want to thank Ms. Grantham too for the work she did in applying for the grant in order to do the 4.3, as far as the darkening shades and helping with our students here at Rogers. So, thank you.
Mr. Chair?
Yes.
I move approval for 4.1, 4.2, and 4.3.
Seconded.
Is there any further discussion on that? All of us in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? It's unanimous, thank you, and thank you very much for applying for those grants and Mr. Connell as well.
Yep, thank you.
Thank you. The next item would be, we'll drop down right into our discussion items. And 5.1. Superintendent will provide an update on empowerment schools. 2016 General Assembly enacted a School and Family Empowerment Act specifically to help empower educators to lead innovative schools, to help students reach their full potential. This was something that I had, I had looked at last year, and I understand that we're unique in many ways down here. And I just basically asked the superintendent to bring it up for discussion, since it was a new law, if it's something that, there's any appetite for it. So Superintendent Jermaine, if you could-
Thank you, Mr. Chair. In front of you this evening, you have the guidance document about the empowerment schools. And just getting to the, I'll just cut through the chase. The empowerment schools is, there's a belief system that the teachers and the principal that work in the buildings know about their buildings, and what they know and what they feel, and how children should receive their education, what kind of processes, educational deliveries, how the culture and climate they would like to create. So the empowerment school actually is a document that provides guidance on how to become so-called empowered and to run your school. The second paragraph, well, actually, the first paragraph, which says leadership matters, and empowerment schools build their notion that educators closest to students know their students best, and that these educators have the best potential to lead innovative schools that help their students reach their full potential. In 2016, the General Assembly enacted the School and Family Empowerment Act specifically to empower educators. And all of this work and everything as far as the school-based autonomy is on the premise that is the people in the building with their leader know what's best for students and how to proceed. So the document provides guidance and really is a good discussion point, but it does require a lot of discussion, working with your teachers, working with your teachers' union, et cetera. To become an empowerment school, you'll notice there is a process that, let's see, on page-
Page 10.
Oh, thank you, page 10, shows actually the process you can go through, what is required, what is not. And you'll notice there's an application cover sheet, narrative, and then there's, eventually, there's a vote, an affirmation, affirmation of at least two-thirds of the staff, if they're interested in participating in this initiative. And then there's a budget, and I think that's one of the things that some leaders and teachers appreciate more because they have total control over their budget. There can be some things in the empowerment school, such as transportation, if you have a district-wide transportation contract, food contract, or anything. You can check off things that would not necessarily go entirely over to the control of the school. But it basically is to enable the school to run itself.
And there are currently no schools in the state of Rhode Island, public schools, that are, this is a new law that was initiated, a new enabling act, I guess, or an empowerment act.
Correct.
You're saying that it would take two-thirds vote of the staff within that school to even approve it? And there's a very lengthy process here.
Correct.
My thinking was that, listening to all of the input from the three different schools of how unique and different they are, that it would just simply be something that I thought the superintendent should bring to each campus and just take a look at it and see if it's something that fits. They give you some liberties on how you would do your educational process. I mean, I skimmed through it, you call me crazy, but I was reading it at 2:00 in the morning, I couldn't sleep. And I didn't fall asleep, I actually read the whole thing, because it was interesting and just something that I thought that maybe, it's an outside-the-box approach, and I'm listening to a lot of input from a lot of our teachers. Sometimes they feel like they don't want this common core, or they don't want something stuffed down their throats from the state, and why can't, you know, we might know better. That's the main reason why I'm bringing this to the table, to get it back out to the staff and to see if there's any appetite whatsoever, or will, within the district, to do something like this. Mrs. Gaines, and then Kathy.
When I first heard about this empowerment movement and talked to some of the teachers around, our teachers around the state, the one thing that was, I found as a disincentive was the competitiveness within districts when there were, say, three or four elementary schools. And one school decides to become an empowerment school, and the other schools are not quite there yet. It set up a lot of friction. I thought Newport would be ideal for that, because we only have one elementary, one middle, and one high school. And I saw nothing but positivity coming out of this because it would give our teachers the voice that they so much yearn for in making the decisions that govern their schools. I don't see how we can lose with this, but I realize it's got to be a two-thirds vote. So one of the disincentives might be is that you accept the responsibility, you have to accept the blame. So if it doesn't work, then it falls back, you know. But I, I'm excited about it. I hope, I hope Newport can at least look at this, and if not embrace the entire thing, embrace some pieces of it. So I think we need to talk about it.
Miss Sylvia?
I guess my question was, has the information been made available at all the schools? Because it has to come from the teachers and the schools. So it's great that we have it and you have it, but they're the ones that have to prepare the application to go to you, and if you approve, to come to us. So they would really need to be aware of all of this.
Right, so it has been mentioned in the past before, and there wasn't, I'll say, an appetite for it. There are some concerns, I think, and I think the people who can best express their concerns are the teachers and those that do wonder about, most importantly, about respecting contract. And, you know, I think change is different, so what would this look like? And I think it would require a lot of trust on both sides, which is challenging at times. So we have had discussions about this at times, and at this point in time, I don't know if there is an appetite for it. We have a lot going on.
Sure, and again, Superintendent Jermaine, it really was just something that, oh, I'm sorry. Dr. Flowers? It's just something that is really all I wanted. I'm just going back over the past three years and hearing a lot of teachers saying, boy, if I could just do it our way. There is an opportunity, and again, it might be a little bit too steep, it might be a little scary, but what Ms. Gaines says is, you know, you take the blame, I'd say you take the credit.
Yeah.
What if you changed it?
Absolutely.
I look at the other side of it, what if you could change? So, Dr. Flowers?
Yeah, this is, because the more you read this document, the more things sink in. It's a shared leadership, I suppose you could look at it. And it went under a different name about, I would say, 30 years ago, if not more. It was called School-Based Management. And we would-
Site-Based Management, yes.
Yeah, yeah, Site-Based Management. And it was, I mean, we were just thrilled about the whole thing at, over the hill, the school is no longer there. And unfortunately, it sort of, it died a natural death, I guess. But it would seem that the layout here might be a little more fine-tuned. Again, you need the people who are there in the trenches to make that decision, and an informed decision too, but it's certainly worth addressing and looking at. And it'd just be interesting to hear some of the feedback. But at least we are aware that this is being presented, which is good.
Mrs. Gaines, did you have anything further?
No, I just, I just hope we can, we can talk about it and maybe find some parts of this that we could, we could use in Newport.
Mr. Collins?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Superintendent Jermaine, do you know, I don't know the answer, I'm not sure if my colleagues know the answer. Do you know the act that was enacted by the Assembly, and I assume it was signed into law by the governor?
Yep. Yes, it says, it's at the beginning of your guidance. It was, it went in 2016, General Assembly enacted it.
Super, thank you very much. That's not my real question, I just wanted to make sure it was actually law now. The question I have is, during the discussion at the Assembly about this proposal, there was a controversial portion that Commissioner Wagner had suggested, which would allow students from a district, for lack of a better phrase, that students, parents, guardians, whoever's in charge of a student, decides is underperforming. That the student is then allowed to request admittance to another public school within, at the time, it was statewide, but I heard questions about within a certain-
Within the district.
Well, that's impossible, because suppose you're at Rogers High School, there's no other high school in the district.
That's why it would be ideal for Newport.
I, with great respect to my colleague, I find that not to be believable, that the General Assembly would enact language that specifies within the own district that if someone, a parent, guardian, was not satisfied with the performance of a school, that they could choose another school. That would suggest that the Assembly said, for example, with Middletown and Newport, if they don't like Middletown High School or Rogers High School, they could send the child to Goday or Pell. That's absurd. So the question is, is that controversial language still included? Is that controversial language included in the, in the new law? And if so, are you concerned about that, that language?
I do not believe it is still in it, Mr. Collins. It was something that was brought up. There was another act that did, it wasn't the Empowerment Act, but there was sections to it, and it was, once you became, and I'm trying to go back in my memory, once you became an empowerment district, there was, in the third year, there was discussion, if any of you remember, about family choice, and families would have a choice after three years. I'll go back and look at this again, I don't remember seeing it in this guidance document.
It's not in the act, does this have a sunset on it? In other words, we will look at that possibility at the end of a one-year timeframe, whenever the law became enacted, or?
No, I thought it was, I thought, I heard someone say three years. There is, I did notice the commissioner at any time may, by notifying the school committee, school, and the district, that if the commissioner wishes to revoke it, he or she does have that right. That is in here.
I'll tell you why, Superintendent Jermaine, that I asked this question, just like you, I know, and probably my colleagues. I would be very concerned about any type of ability to remove students from the Newport Public Schools and allow them to choose other public schools on an equal basis, high school to high school, et cetera, whether it's statewide or whether it's Newport Countywide. That would, I think, be a disincentive, not that any of us, or you, or anyone else involved with the Newport School Department would do that, but there would then become, I see, a disincentive to improve the Newport Public Schools if you can simply send students to, without the, the other district consenting, by the way, to another district.
That discussion did come up at one point or another. And actually, that discussion, not for the districts, the superintendents did have this discussion. And some looked at it as incentivizing districts to do better so your children and families don't want to leave your district. And it was, I'll call it, it was almost like an open-market concept. If you want to keep families and keep students in your schools, then you need to provide the services that they're looking for. When the charter school movement started at that point in time, that was one of the comments I always used to raise when someone wanted to have a charter school in the district. And I'd say, as a superintendent, I'd say, well, what is it we're not giving you as a family and students? And I think that's what we need to focus on more when that starts to happen, when people want to build those. We have teachers here who are very caring and do great work. And giving them the flexibility and empowering them to be able to serve the students the way they feel is best, I think opens a lot of creativity and power to the staff and to the leadership. They know, they're with the students more than anyone, so they know what they need.
Thank you very, very much, thank you, Mr. Chairman.
You're welcome, thank you.
Am I confused, Mr. Chairman? Am I confused in that this, when this empowerment discussion was taking place, it was about empowering schools within districts, not areas?
Right.
So the angst came from, say, a district by Providence. If they had an empowered school in Providence, and that school was attracting students from other schools, it set up a tension in the community. This is not about Providence and Cranston. It's not about Newport and Middletown. It's about Middletown and Middletown schools. It's about Newport and Newport schools. That was my understanding of it. It was not to set up a competition between districts, but it was to empower individual schools within a district. So I saw Newport as not having a problem there, because we only have one elementary school. If that school is empowered or not empowered, who, who's, what's your choice?
My recollection of when this was first drafted was, the purpose and point behind it was, people who know the children the best are the people in the classroom and in the building. And what is it, and how can districts, how can the state, enable and empower them to do what they want to do, to reiterate with the chair what Mr. Hanos was saying, that hearing that teachers want to do things they feel they can't do, so let's give them, let's empower them, empower the leadership and the teachers in the buildings, wherever those buildings are, to do what they feel is innovative and best for their kids, who really got upset about- Who really got upset about this were the superintendents. And I remember sitting at the meetings, I say, and, and because I do believe that the people in the building know the best, and the people in the building should be able to do what they want to do, and not have all these other directives. If we want every child to be reading on grade level by grade three, teachers should be able to do what they want, how they want to do it, and be able to, you know, but they have to have consensus and agreement amongst themselves, they also have to work as a team. And the, I, the superintendent is not the person in the building with them every day. They know their students. So, the superintendents were the ones that got upset, and I frankly said, well, if that's what happens, and every school becomes an empowered school, go for it, I'll go back and be a building principal if someone will have me. But there you go. That's, that's really what the whole crux of it was. I see, we have, like I've said, we've had discussions and we've talked about it in the district within the past year, I've mentioned it at faculty meetings, and I have had discussion with union leadership about it. There are differences of opinion about it, and there's not an agreement about all aspects of it, or at, at all about it. And I think it, it's about further conversation, and I think the others, union leadership and others have concerns from their perspectives about it, respecting the contracts, et cetera.
Certainly, and that's basically all it is. Outside of the box, something to look at, something to throw out, something to just churn over, something to say, I know that we shouldn't be doing this type of, I got a better idea. This gives you the lateral ability within, you have to apply to the state, but it also takes a two-thirds buy-in of the staff. So, this is nothing coming down from us, other than, let's just talk about it. That's really all it boils down to.
So, I have two things to say as I sit here, that, about listening to teachers.
Kristi, do you want to go to the microphone?
About listening to teachers, I just want to remind everyone, when we negotiated our last contract, our main issue was reducing class size, and we were ignored about class size.
Nobody was ignored, we discussed it heavily.
Okay, I'm, I'm safe.
Nobody was ignored.
Teachers, teachers are concerned about class size, so my concern is that maybe we start with the things that we can do something about without that, as far as that. We all know that small class sizes help kids do better, and we advocated for that, and have been advocating for that, so all the other issues, but I would say, if we could start listening by teachers, when, as you're hiring Mrs. Carroll for our next negotiations, that that would be something to consider, to listen to teachers about the importance of small class sizes. There's many other issues, and, but, that in itself, we expressed where, where you feel, so that was all, thank you.
Thank you. Any other discussion on the item?
I will bring it forward.
Sure.
And continue the conversations.
Yeah, that's all I'm asking for. Staffing update, Superintendent?
Yes, so tomorrow, you're going to, Mrs. Gilman, Nancy Gilman, our HR person, she's been very busy, and we have been working with the teachers' union as well, and we're going over those that have either retired, or on leave, or have, they've resigned. So, we have some openings that will be posted tomorrow. We're being very careful, and we're watching the budget as we're doing all this. There are some areas that teachers, and this is listening to what teachers are asking about, as far as teachers, as far as the in-school suspension, we do have one, there is a position at Rogers, we're trying to see with restaffing if we don't have to have an add on that, but we may have an add there as far as staffing for in-school suspension person, and we will be coming forward with new Paris. We've had children registering, coming into the district. Ms. Grantham has been very busy as far as doing transitioning meetings. We will have new Paris, we'll be adding five new Paris, but we also will not have some out-of-district tuitions that we thought we'd have. So, we'll have a cost analysis for you on that, but I just wanted to give you a heads up, because the next, the past month has been very busy. It will get busier as we go through the next couple of weeks. So, I just wanted to give you a heads up, and as always, we will bring to your attention if something is budgeted or not budgeted, as far as staffing. But we're listening, and we're looking at the Rogers High School student course requests. Mr. Vance has been working with Ms. Fisher, so we're looking at what we're offering, it's just, he's just starting his third week, so we're trying to get everything together. I will share with you also that as part of, again, listening to concerns, staff, safety, Mr. Vance has, in two of his former districts, has had what he called security assistants. And what they are, are part-time people that actually just do the hallways, they do door checks, and he's writing up a description on that, and we're looking at that, so I am working with Mr. Roy to see if there's going to be some way we can help fund and support that. So, that's where we are.
Yeah, and I, I appreciate that, and I don't think there's any questions whatsoever from this panel about the issues that we're having with discipline within our districts, and let the parents and kids beware, we're going to be coming down with a lot stricter this year, it's so, so let's all play nicely together, but the public schools are going to be rolling out a little bit of a stricter policy and adhering to it and sticking to it, so parents and kids, come to school and be ready to learn.
Right, so we will be implementing new programs, especially at Rogers and Thompson. It'll be more of a restorative practice, for those of you in the public and others that know about suspensions and in-school suspensions. This is something where, as, we've actually piloted it, and we've been piloting it here in Rogers in a small way, but we're going to expand it to the entire campus now, and I want to thank Ms. Grantham and Ms. Fisher, they've been overseeing that, have had discussions with Ms. Grantham, Mr. Vance, and Ms. Fisher. We had a Friday afternoon meeting last week, we mapped it out. We're getting, Ms. Grantham is putting the guidelines together, and we will have it for both schools, and both will have new hires for that.
Any further discussion? Next item would be down to the consent, consent agenda.
Mr. Chairman?
Mr. Carlin?
Separate vote on consent agenda items, please.
Mr. Chairman, I move, what items?
Separate vote, all, all three separately, please.
You know, six one, six two, and six three separate, is what you're asking?
Correct.
Okay. Is there a motion to accept six point one?
So moved, second.
Any discussion on that?
Discussion.
Mr. Carlin?
Correction to the, the minutes, please, Mr. Chairman. June twentieth minutes, special school committee meeting, I know there are four sets of minutes that we're reviewing and voting on this evening, June twentieth minutes regarding six point oh of the minutes, and it's fairly complicated, but you can see return to open session under the heading six point zero. Six point one, disclosure of executive session votes and disposition, disposition of minutes. Four point one, Mr. Gomes made a motion to approve administrator contracts per the review of individuals. Mrs. Sylvia seconded the motion, which passed five to one with Mr. Carlin opposed. There is nothing wrong with that statement or that recording of the minutes?
Yes.